Call meeting order. Press the button, ladies and gentlemen.
United States of America, and see the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, in his own liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the October 2nd meeting of the county commissioners 2024. I can't believe it's already October 2nd. I would like to remind everybody that this is a public meeting. We are being recorded via audio and video. If you do want to address the board, please come to the podium with your name and address for the record. Recognitions, correspondence, Commissioner Timmons.
I do, and I want to give two challenge coins to Steve Cregan and to Dan Laney. And the reason was, I attended a meeting that they were at last night. And they, I wouldn't say they were put in the hot seat, but they certainly had some challenging questions put in front of them. They handled them beautifully. Lots of good information, and I think with the upcoming election, they're doing a fantastic job. And so my hat's off to them, and I just wanted to give them these points.
He said I'm gonna give him two challenges.
We give them each other two.
Two?
Yeah.
They just each get one.
What?
Yeah, you're gonna give them each two challenge points.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Well done. Well recommended.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes, I do want to point out that this is American Association of Code Enforcement Month, National Code and Compliance Month. And that the American Association of Code Enforcement actually wrote a proclamation. And I do want to recognize the Umatilla County Code Enforcement Team. Bob, your whole team is a... I haven't heard very many people say, hey, it's a nice job. Thanks for code enforcing. It is kind of a thankless job, and I think they do a great job. You could pass that on to them. And yourself. Thank you, Bob.
I had a conversation one time with Larry Rowan when he was still Code Enforcement. Now, for those who don't know, Larry Rowan used to be the sheriff's jail commander. He made the comment to me, he said, I've had every job I could have with the sheriff's office, and not one have I been more disliked than code enforcement. So, and that was back when code enforcement fell into the sheriff's office, so, but yeah. Dan, I was also recognized already, but I want to thank Dan, and I think it might have been Riley or Tim on the phone. I'm not sure who you were talking to last night, but we had a meeting in here last night. We were having all kinds of IT difficulties, and Dan, you really knocked it out of the park getting it out of there. So I, yeah.
Didn't know the path between the system up there, so I had to get a hold of Tim eventually.
It was Tim. Okay, yeah, thank you, Tim, for that as well, because it made a lot, a big difference when Echo went away and everything else. We appreciate that. Approval of minutes from previous meetings, March 13th, June 25th, and September 18th.
I'd move for approval.
Motion is second. I'll bear the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
I'd move to turn the heater off.
Yeah, it sounds like a 747 tape.
We did.
Oh, okay.
I did that because I forgot to do that.
You can hear it from your phone. Are we gonna get air on?
Yeah, can you do the air on from there?
Additions to the agenda, crop signage. That's okay. Public input and recognition of visitors. Now is the time to address the board if you have anything you want to talk about that is not on the agenda. Seeing anything in person or online. With that, we will jump right into our business items. Item number one, DD contracts and soccer enthusiasts.
Good morning. Kim Beck, Umatilla County Human Services Director. I'm here before you to ask permission to pay Cola Ship and Tower $50,500 through a grant that we received through the Office of Developmental Disability Services.
Or?
We actually got a grant to do a service equity project that, with a cultural specific provider, and Cola Ship and Tower is, and the, without the project, is who we are working with on this. It is specifically focused for diversity and equity training centered around safety and self-defense. Three classes for families, 20 families per class, and then to learn about how to use the safety plan and do safety planning. And there will be three classes of professional certification for 30 professionals to get certified in helping people use the safety planning document, as well as two self-defense classes in March for anyone who's participated in any of those trainings. Along with approximately 20 hours a month, 20 hours a week, excuse me, or a month, excuse me, of technical assistance from Cola to work with our staff specifically on barriers we're facing in making sure that safety plans are in place for all of our individuals. Because even though people with disabilities only makes up 12% of the population, they're 26%, 26% of victims are people with disabilities. And they're four times more likely to be victims of violent crime.
So it's the program focused on victims, or on victims? And then, secondly, is it focused on people with disabilities?
No, it's specifically focused for people with disabilities in creating safety plans to keep them from being victims, and specifically to ensure that they get home. It's a safety plan to, if they were to go missing, or they were to leave, leave a safe place, that, if the document that can be handed to the police officers that first 24 hours that has all their information on it. And one of the things that we're working with Cola on specifically for this is an addendum or an appendix that would specifically be about how our individuals communicate and what police officers or any first responders could expect in their behavior or how it is that they would be able to understand what was going on.
Thank you. Pretty sure I know the answer to this question already, but is this general fund dollars?
No. We actually got a $78,000 grant, and this is part.
I appreciate how proactive you are on this, Kim, because I was on a state meeting the other day, and this kind of, they were talking about on that meeting. And so I very much, I'm glad that you were able to get the funding and identifying this, because I guess this is more than just our problem. This is a statewide issue that, so thank you. With that, I move to authorize the contract with Cola Ship and Tower for $50,500 for equity service.
Second. Got a motion, second? Any further discussion? I'll bear the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think this might be Mark, the G H E Z Zone School Support Fee.
Good morning, Commissioners. Always glad to be able to come over and visit with you. So this issue before you this morning is more...
Stop me just naming City Hall address.
I apologize. Mark Morgan, I'm the Assistant City Manager with City of Hermiston, also the Zone Manager for the Greater Hermiston Enterprise Zone, address at City Hall, 180 Northeast 2nd Hermiston. Now, so what we have before you this evening for this morning is more just some housekeeping type items associated with the Greater Hermiston Enterprise Zone, and really something that will apply to all of the enterprise zones in Umatilla County. This comes out of some action of state legislature back in 2023 to require that for long-term rural enterprise zones, moving forward, future long-term, some agreements that get entered into. There is a requirement now that 15% of the amount that would have been paid in tax otherwise, now those businesses have to send that amount to the state, between 15% and 30%. State law, we had to go out and work with all of the impacted school districts within the Greater Hermiston Enterprise Zone. The Hermiston Enterprise Zone actually has two school districts within it, or at least portions of it. Hermiston School District and Stanfield School District. So we started working with both of them here last year to identify what that percentage would be between that 15% and 30%. I think everybody agrees that it's better to go with the smaller amount that ends up getting sent back to the state, and that maximizes the amount of dollars that stay locally here in the community. So the Stanfield School District approved a 15% rate back in March. The Hermiston School District approved 15% at their meeting here this month. The Hermiston City Council approved the 15% last week, and now we're here asking for your concurrence.
First comment I have to make is, enterprise zones can get confusing, but your narrative on this was spot on. I thought you did a great job with the narrative. And I think it's almost totally self-explanatory the way you guys wrote it up. Thanks to you and our team, to Rachel and all the work that you did. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I was discussing with Rachel earlier, when I present these things to the Hermiston City Council, I tend to go a lot more in-depth because they're much more part-time type folks. So, you know, I have been on staff report, lots of detail for folks that want to maybe watch it online. Also, if they wanted to go learn more about it, they can go watch the City of Hermiston's YouTube from our council meeting last Monday, and it goes into a lot. So if folks want to learn more about it, because I agree, the enterprise zone program is complex. It only gets more complex every time the legislature meets, because they want to add more recalls to it. So this is must-do, all those.
And it is on our website, too. If they go to the VOC meetings, they click the link right to it. And I think that that description and how you worded it is a model where the rest of the state can follow, because I mean, that's well done.
Yeah, I appreciated, just like what Dan said, I thought it was very clear. But I appreciated when he went through and talked, you know, you gave your descriptions that you mentioned several times, this is a complex issue.
Yeah.
And, but, you know, and then laid out the information. I thought this was very interesting. I thought the whole, the background was interesting. A lot of this information I didn't know, and I thought you did a great job. Thank you.
With that said, I would move to adopt number BCC 24-6.
Motion is second. All fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number three, public works purchase.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Pelles, Public Works Director. So what we brought before the board today is approval to purchase a corrugated multiplate arch. We use these arches in replacement of wood bridge structures. Over the years, wood has done pretty well for the county, but in the long term, we've started looking at different ways to minimize our maintenance costs and maintenance on these structures. We went out for a bid on this. We received two bids back, one from Contech Engineering and one from Lane Enterprises. Lane Enterprises came in as the low bidder at $27,777.77. I'm not sure how they managed that. And so the Public Works would recommend an approval of the Lane Enterprises bid.
Quick question. I should ask you this before, Tom, but does Lane Enterprises have a local distributor?
Yes, and I don't know, it's not, it's local in Oregon. I don't know where their office is, but it's somewhere down in, I want to say Eugene.
I see a truck with that hauling those around.
Yeah, that's, that's, I, when we first got the bid from them, I looked and I'm going, well, at least...
Pennsylvania.
But then I started looking at Contech, and their stuff is built in Tennessee, so it's, it's not that unheard of. But yes, they, somebody is distributing for Lane Enterprises, and I believe it's down in somewhere on the I-54.
Lane Bell.
I do have a question. Where is this going, Tom?
This particular structure is going to go up on, this is the wooden structure that was just to the south of the Thorn Hollow Bridge. It's the county's responsibility. That bridge was not on the national bridge inventory, so it didn't qualify for federal funding to replace it. And so the county has to, has to replace that small structure for that, in that area. We could replace it with wood, but that doesn't stand any...
I'd move for approval of the Lane contract for the arch.
Motion is second. All fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Or tourism grant contract.
Good morning. Very well, Ashley, with Umatilla County Tourism. So back in May, we, well, actually, back in November, previous year, we received a grant from Travel Oregon, a competitive grant. This was an accessibility grant to help us go through the region, specifically what's called Oregon's rugged country, Umatilla County. Part of those funds went to hire Ashley with Empowering Access, who you guys approved the contract for back in May. What we did was we had 16 site visits, and she worked with the businesses, and we got their information put on bluecoff.org. It's a site that we are using regionally and will be used statewide to help people with accessibility issues be able to kind of plan out their travel a little bit easier. When Ashley came, we didn't meet the anticipated numbers that we originally had, so we had some funding left over. So working with Travel Oregon, and to kind of continue on the work that Ashley had done for us in the first half, what we call Phase One, we, I sat down with Travel Oregon, and we kind of revised a few things. So moving forward, in pretty much the same manner with the Phase Two, we have devised a new contract with Ashley Payne, who we will, we put together a list for her of these businesses that couldn't necessarily be involved in the early phase of the program that wish to be involved now. So we think it's really important to get these businesses involved and kind of take them through, you know, their door width, their bathroom accessibility, anything for people with mobility issue coming in. And so we've revised the contract for her to come in to do that, and that's what I'm looking for on approval today. With that, the remaining funds, we got the okay from Travel Oregon. We will also be buying sensory bags to distribute out for people that have sensory issues to kind of, you know, just keep them, you know, feeling comfortable and occupied in their circumstance, wherever it is, whether it's audio, visual, or whatever. So we thought that would be another applicable part of it. So today I'm looking for approval on this Phase Two contract.
Carrie, the contract is blank at $10 per hour. Is that kind of so that you can fill that in with the remaining dollars that you have?
Yeah, we have actually, I submitted the one with, put in now. It's, we're doing $45 an hour, and then also budgeted for her mileage on going to the communities.
67 cents a mile. I thought I had the same question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you know how much is left in your grant?
Yeah, we're just right around $8,000. And so this, this contract, I've budgeted about $4,500 for the remaining work to be done. And with that, Travel Oregon has encouraged us to use up the remaining funds in the way we see fit. And so we thought the sensory bags would be a good, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure I said this in May, is we actually are put in this position where you have to have people, you know, you have people in a wheelchair, and you're transporting them around. My mom had a stroke. And so we learned very quickly that access into buildings and businesses, it's tough for people that have problems, you know, moving or at mobility difficulties. You do not realize how important that is until you're put in that position. So I applaud, yes, that's for sure. With that, I'd like to move to approve the contract for professional services with Ashley Payne for site visits according to the contract funded by Travel Oregon. For accessibility awareness, and authorize the chair to sign.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item five, crop signage program.
Morning, Commissioners. Bob Walder, Community Development Director. Yes, I did sneak this in this morning, but I have visited with all of you about it prior to the date. I've been working with Carrie on another tourism initiative, which is working in collaboration with Oregon Women for Agriculture to enhance agriculture education and awareness throughout our region. And so starting in the 2025 growing season, we plan to install crop signage along key roadways in Umatilla County. And these signs would help the public identify the various crops being grown, helping to foster a greater understanding and appreciation of our agriculture sector, which is very important here in Umatilla County. So to help support this initiative, we're looking to partner with local schools and their welding programs to fabricate these metal sign holders, which will display the crop signs that Oregon women in agriculture have developed. And this project would provide a fantastic hands-on learning opportunity for the students in allowing them to apply their welding skills in a real-world context while contributing to a meaningful community effort. Also looking more long-term, once we get the signage in place, we'll be working with our GIS program to actually map all the locations of where we have these signs, who the landowner is. But then work with them to develop a link to our tourism page where someone who's driving through Umatilla County could actually click a QR code to identify the crop, and then it would send them to a page and present facts about the crop that's being grown here, why it's important to Umatilla County and Oregon, and give some statistics, things like that. Really, another enhancement to our tourism here in the county, specifically agritourism. So seeking approval to allocate 7,500 from our economic development budget, and this would support the cost of fabricating the sign holders for those FFA programs and welding programs to fabricate those. And then we would also contribute to the participating chapters, a $500 contribution for their efforts to go to the chapter activities. Any other questions?
Talk about this. I like the program.
I do, too. I support every part of it. Well thought out.
That would move for approval.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Motion, say aye.
Thanks to you and all the Oregon African women, for all their help.
Hey, next item, courthouse parking lot sealing.
Good morning, Commissioners. Stan Laney, Director of Administrative Services. And before you is a part two request, actually, one to, the first one, to fill the, to clean it, fill the joints, and then seal and re-stripe the courthouse parking lot. And originally, we had another vendor that was going to do that, and they actually did get some issues, and they didn't do the project, and they're done for the year. So our facility manager, Marty, has been able to find this other group that is still open and able to fill the parking lot right now, because our time window is really shrinking really quick. So because of the temperature getting ready to drop, and the sealant is something that's only during a certain time of year that they can, that even, that you can pick up. So we're looking at going with S M, it's the, they're actually specialized pavement marking is named the company. So S E M is the corporation to do that for $7,917.
Once approved, how long would it take for?
I think he's got them pretty well scheduled in the next few weeks. I'm not sure what is, what will happen. I have to ask Marty, because it's kind of determined that we got this approved today so they can get it scheduled. It's a weekend project. They come in Friday, and we'll blast out the, dirt out the cracks, and seal it, and then it dries for a little bit, and then they come in and put the sealant on it on Saturday, then that dries, and then Sunday they stripe the parking lot. It's a weekend project.
Are we talking strictly this parking lot here?
So we're talking, this one right here is strictly this parking lot right here.
I know that both of the others needed to, so I'd like...
Yeah, this was a priority because this one's the oldest, and then we're kind of going in. The next one, that's in need, hierarchy of which one's in the need the most. The next one's over here at the health department, and then hopefully next year we can see about these other ones.
Did you do the re-stripping? Can we get Commissioner Timmons' parking space?
A little wider.
A little wider. She has trouble getting into her parking space.
Well, since Doran doesn't park in his, I could just make it double there, maybe. Move you over, you know.
I think we should all go out and look at Dan's car this morning, because the line is right in the center of the car. I mean, the wheel, I look.
I know. I've tried to train them, so when they get to that parking lot, they'll do it right.
Is that it? Okay.
The other question I have back to parking lots is, can you, and this is just a favor, Dan, is, I know that past week, I think we've actually approved it, but what the status is for the lighting across the street.
So we do have...
I don't need an answer now. I just wanted to...
Yeah, there's a few things of Mark leaving, and I don't stop that. I do have white poles over there in the maintenance facility, but...
It's that time of year where it's on our minds.
Yes, I know. Thank you.
Anyway, I would move for approval to get this courthouse sealed and striped.
Motion is second. I'll bear the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And the next one before you is for the health departments.
There you go. Thank you. I would move for approval of the public health's parking lot getting stripped.
I do have a question on that one, Dan. Is it both parking lots, or just the one?
I believe it's supposed to be both parking lots.
Not yours.
Marty took care of the bid, but he wasn't able to make it, so I believe it's for both. I'll double check that.
I'm just curious.
I'll double check it.
Thank you.
So we, motion is second. Any further discussion? All fair the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Seven, ambulance staffing waiver.
Hello, Commissioners. Sage along, emergency management. First one, I apologize. Sorry, I'm not available in person today. Some daycare switching around, so I'm not home with my kiddo. So before you today is the East Umatilla Health District and East Umatilla County Ambulance Service Area Health District has requested from the State of Oregon for variance to allow staffing of the district's ambulance with a non-EMT driver. The district is renewing the request for the State of Oregon to grant a variance for staffing reduction and providing ambulance services in this area. This is something that has been placed for several years, and is a benefit for the ability to provide services. And the process requires approval from the Board of Commissioners. So what we're asking... So, what we're asking today is an approved to request for the East Yumitilla County Ambulance Service Area Health District to operate using reduced staffing. And, and by that, they do have ALS and BLS providers. Essentially, this would be the second out ambulance being able to staff it with an individual to drive the vehicle, not provide care, but to drive the ambulance during their third shift, which would be a firefighter driving the ambulance. They would still have a certified either BLS or ALS provider twenty-four-seven. This would just be for that vehicle. And then, from that individual, they are working on getting those individuals through EMT school at this time and it just takes, takes some time to do that. So, that's what's before you.
I was actually on that board when we first initiated that back in 2013 and it's saved that district more times than.
So, is, is there two people in the, if it's an ALS, there's two people in the driver in the ambulance? Is that how that goes?
Correct. Well, BLS would be, yes, so there's still two people. They just need a driver to drive the, the ambulance. So, if the first goes out on a call, they have a driver that's an EMT certified driver. And then, you have an ALS or BLS provider with them. But when it goes to the second call, they need somebody to drive the, the vehicle, not so much provide the care. And that would be a firefighter that's trained to do that.
Right, and there'll be two others in the vehicle at that point. There'll be three total, correct?
I believe so. I would need to check. I, I, I believe that's correct, but I don't want to.
So, there's a driver and one other?
I think it all depends on what this classification of the driver is. In this case, if it's just a fire, then I think there are two.
Yes, correct. And the first one, it doesn't, so if the, if the, the driver is not certified EMT, then they would need two others on the vehicle, which would be the second out, which they would have. But the first one, they would, sorry.
Oh, you're good, Sage.
The first one, if the driver is certified EMT, then you only need an ALS or BLS provider. So, I, I guess I was confused with that. So, yes, correct.
Okay.
Unless that ALS is a bike driver, there's difference.
Well, my, you don't want to, you don't want a, a non-certified person and then one other and that's it. So, that, I just want to make sure we're staying away from that.
I agree with John. I, I think we've done this every year since I've been.
Yeah.
But I think I brought this up before too. Is there a goal at East Yumitilla to get away from this request?
Yes, so Michael Cabassi, I probably mispronounced his last name, so I apologize if, if he's hearing this or does hear this and I, I did that. But they're currently putting those individuals through EMT school. It just takes, they can't take the whole district and send them to EMT school at the same time. So, he, in his emails and his, in talking with me, they're hopeful that by next year, they would not have to renew this variance.
So, when, when this first started, it was for the first out ambulance because the staffing was so bad. Now, it's just for the second out ambulance. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. Well, and it could even, this might, it, it more or less goes to the, even a third out ambulance if that, that requires, and the third shift, yep.
It was the third out back then. I think they're, I think they're third ambulance.
A mechanic on the front.
For approval.
Motion second. All prepare the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Emergency management grant contract.
Hello Commissioners, before you, Yumitilla County Emergency Management is seeking the approval of a contract with Dean Markham for a local emergency planning committee tabletop, so that's the LEPSE. And that is supposed to take place on November seventeenth of this year. This grant was a hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant that was previously through OSP, but is now through the Oregon State Fire Marshal. This was a, a grant that was approved before my time in two thousand and twenty-two. Upon the approval, it was for eight thousand dollars. In talking with the grant committee and those individuals through OSFM, the grant was originally supposed to update our hazardous materials emergency plan. That, that money was not sufficient enough to do that. And in talking with the previous EM staff and the Oregon State Fire Marshal, that they were, they're pretty knowledgeable that that wasn't going to happen. And so, we have pivoted to hold a exercise in place of that. That has been approved through OSFM and we got an extension on this grant. And then, we are, the, the hazardous material emergency preparedness grant just opened up again. So, we'll be applying for more money to, to complete that plan and get that updated as soon as possible. But they're kind of on the same page with us. That was not near as enough money to hire a contractor to do that plan. And so, this would be a ammonium release. We're looking to involve Athena Weston, Helix, OSP, St. Mary's, multiple agencies. And we're, we're looking at trying to involve some reunification, some different stuff that would, that would involve the school. And so, I think this is a, this is a great exercise for the community. And the local emergency planning committee is also involved in being a part of this, so they'll be participating with industry. So, what we're looking for is an approval of the contract with Dean Markham to the amount of eight thousand to facilitate the LEPSE exercise on November seventeenth.
I'm glad to hear that Athena's in the mix. When, when they had the antihypers ammonia leak in Athena, my wife was evacuated out of our house and the last thing she saw in the rearview mirror she's driving away was a big cloud of antihypers enveloping our house. So, I'm glad to, and that was, we had our, our lungs for the last quite well though that year.
So, also chill down all your beers. My comment here is I've sat through two of these, you know, there are these ammonia tabletops that Dean has done over the last four years. And he does an excellent job with them. And you can tell that by the number of people that, that go to them. But my question is, just capacity-wise, Sage, is Dean going to handle this wall-to-wall?
No, so, so he, he's facilitating some of this, but I'm heavily involved in this process. And that will help us qualify for our emergency management preparedness grant as well. We are supposed to hold two exercises a year and get those approved through the state. And so, this would be one of those qualifying exercises. And I'm, I'm heavily involved in the planning process for this as well.
In your spare time.
Yes.
Thanks Sage. I would move for approval to accept the grant for eight thousand dollars to facilitate the.
Motion second. I'll prepare the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, wildlife map legislation. Okay. Background on this is Jackson County is leading a request to repeal Senate Bill seven-six-two from twenty-twenty-one and Senate Bill eighty from the twenty-twenty-three legislature regarding the development of a statewide wildfire hazard map. The Jackson County Board of Commissioners is sending a letter to the governor and legislators requesting the appeal. Yumitilla County is asked to join the letter as well as other counties throughout the state. Did we just lose something or is that?
Didn't touch a thing, Tim. Tim, I did not.
I think we lost Sage.
Oh, Sage just jumped off. Okay. Looks like we're still good. Okay. So, as, you know, I've been pretty involved with this map. It's wildly inaccurate, doesn't, I, there's one area where it might be in high risk, which would cause, which has potential to cause your insurance to go up, homeowners insurance. And another piece of property that looks identical in every shape, size, and way would be in low risk and no effect. There's no rhyme or reason to this map. They say it's scientific, but when the boots on the ground in each individual county say, well, we disagree with your map because history shows this. Well, history's not one of the indicators that they go off of. I, I couldn't be more dissatisfied with this map. I mean, I think it's, this does everybody a disservice. And my fear is, you know, I'm hearing rumors from other counties where homeowners are saying, oh, it looks like you're in the high classification for high-risk wildfire. So, we're gonna, you're not gonna qualify for insurance anymore, so we're dropping your insurance. Now, I haven't heard of anybody in Yumitilla County having that, but neighboring counties have said that they've had people that are in that boat. We have a lot of land, farmland, especially in high-risk area. And if you order farmland, your high-risk area, they, there is exemption for low risk, for irrigated crops. That would be like a low area for wildfire. But even some of the irrigated properties are still in high risk. So, I think it's, I think the map is a disaster. I think it needs a lot of work before they say this is the final product, which they've already said this is the final product. Is it this month, Bob, they come out with the final one? Yeah, so it's, we're gonna see the final project. And, you know, you see county, other counties who were, the entire thing was, you know, high or extreme risk. And then, all of a sudden, now they have hardly any high extreme risk. It's all low and it's like, well, how did that happen? And you, all the science shows it. Well, the science showed it was high in green a few months ago. What changed?
Political science.
Exactly.
Great comments, and I agree with every one of them. And I think there are people in Yumitilla County that are trying to figure out exactly what it means to their insurance after talking to two different insurance agents and what they're hearing from their overriding at the federal and state level. They have no idea. Even, even when they look at the map, they're not sure what the, the insurance cost is. It's a mess. But that said, on the fifteenth and sixteenth, the State House Natural Resources Committee will be out here at all things wildfire on the fifteenth and sixteenth. Part of the agenda for that, the discussion.
This is a trade record wait to happen.
I'd move for approval and authorize the chair to sign this letter.
I'll second. I have, I do have a comment though. I've been to a couple of these meetings, like you have. And of course, they, they always say it's based on science. It does absolutely nothing for insurance cost, insurance rates. But the whole thing, there's, the room is always full of people. There are always good testimony, but the folks that are putting these together are not listening. I, I just think that needs to be on record because people give solid facts as to why their property should or should not be. Or they question why it's rated like it is and yet folks aren't listening. And I think that's too bad. The other thing is, can you imagine the amount of money that this has cost somebody so far? I mean, we've been through two legislative sessions. It looks like we're gonna be going to a third long session. So, it's just a wave of money.
Because Oregon State's doing it.
Oh, wow. What a chunk of change this has cost to the taxpayers, which is really too bad.
It is.
A second.
Thank you. So, we have a motion, a second. All prepare the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Last but not least, Captain Wolverton with a laptop purchase.
Good morning Commissioners, Paul Wolverton with the Sheriff's Office. I am filling in for Lieutenant Roberts this morning, so I apologize if I am not as articulate about the technology as he is. The request before you this morning is for a purchase of our mobile data terminals, the laptop computers and the patrol vehicles. Lieutenant Roberts has worked with IT to identify the types of laptops and the, the cost differences. So, we've done some comparisons between some things and, and the laptops that we've selected are on recommendation from the IT department. We're requesting to purchase ten of them and that is the request before you. Ten Lenovo ThinkPad laptop computers, price computers. Their total cost fifteen thousand five hundred and forty dollars.
Looking at the three of us, all three of us have a ThinkPad right, right in front of us.
There you go. We want those, but in the cars.
Are they gonna be touchscreen, I'm assuming, for you?
Yeah, they should be, yeah. That's typically what we do for the mobile data.
And these, and these are all all mounted? These are all mounted?
Yes.
Okay. And then, you know what part of the budget that's coming out?
I think Josh listed is our vehicle upfitting.
I saw that in, I saw that in there and I was kind of curious on how that's, that's a different subject, but as long as it's a denim, but I move for approval of the purchase of the laptop.
Got motion, a second. Any further discussion? All prepare the motion. Say aye.
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 All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. That, final thoughts. Commissioner Timmons. Commissioner Doran.
Not really. No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.